Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 18th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. For our prayer today, I'm going to read out of James 1:20-27. "Human anger does not produce the righteousness God desires, so get rid of all the filth and evil in your lives and humbly accept the word of God has planted in your hearts, for it has the power to save your souls. But don't just listen to God's word, you must do what it says, otherwise you are only fooling yourselves. For if you listen to the word and don't obey, it's like glancing at your face in the mirror. You see yourself walking away and forget what you look like. But if you look carefully into the perfect law that sets you free, and you do what it says, and don't forget what you heard, then God will bless you for doing it. If you claim to be righteous but don't control your tongue, you are fooling yourself and your religion is worthless. Pure and genuine religion in the sight of God the Father means caring for orphans and widows in their distress and refusing to let the world corrupt you." Okay, Commissioner Kayla, you have a wonderful dog today. Oh, you think he wants to eat the microphone, or he has something to say.
Come here, let's look this way. Our featured dog this week is a five-month-old female Mastiff mix. She was found in Lorraine. She has a great personality, a beautiful dog, great eyes, she's going to make a great pet for a family. She's available for adoption when, Tim? Saturday she's available for adoption, so get in there, and if not, we have 25 other dogs looking for a forever home, so, oh, you're a great dog, yes you are. Come on.
Cut me more, cut me more. Just wonder where the owners are that would just let a dog like that get away. Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation today from Soloway's, Brandy Schnell, on American Recycles Day Pizza Party Drawing.
Morning, Brandy.
Good morning. So, a couple weeks ago, I was here and I talked about America Recycles Day, which is November 15th, but is celebrated the entire month of November. And as part of our America Recycles Day celebration, we did a pledge drive in the schools. So, we sent a pledge sheet to each of the schools in Lorraine County for each of the teachers, and we asked them to have their students sign the pledge sheet that states that they would learn more about what materials are collected in their community, and reduce their personal waste by recycling more in the next month, and encourage at least one family member or friend to recycle more. And those teachers who had their students sign them and returned them to us were entered into a drawing for a pizza party contest. So, this year, we've collected 1,435 pledges from a total of 62 classrooms in Lorraine County schools. So, I have those teachers' entries in this bag, and I'm going to ask you to pull a name, and this will be a teacher who will win a pizza party that is sponsored by Bobos here in Lorraine County.
Sure.
Ted's going to pull.
You want me to make everybody else mad?
Yeah, right. You make one person mad, a whole bunch of people angry. Or one person happy and one less angry.
Yeah, let's see what it says. See, Larkmore Elementary School, Mrs. Gojavec, Mrs. Gojavec, 6th grade level, Larkmore Elementary in Lorraine.
All right. Congratulations.
Cool. Congratulations.
Pizza for the class.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
The other thing that I was here to talk about is our photo and caption contest. Commissioner Kokoski and myself judged the entries, and we were able to choose four winners. The winners received a gift certificate and a $25 gift card. The gift cards this year were donated by GT Environmental and Rob Ernst and MT Business. And we are having a poster of each picture made, one to the students and one to the winning teacher. One of our photo and caption contest winners was able to attend today's meeting, so I'd like to invite Commissioner Kokoski to present the gift card and certificate to Mrs. Zersky, who will be accepting the award on behalf of her 3rd grade class, who submitted their photograph as a class project. I'm going to show all the pictures in just a moment. Thanks Tiffany, thank you. And now I'm going to do a PowerPoint presentation that is going to show the winners their names, school, and grade levels, so you'll get to see the pictures that we chose. Okay, here we go.
This looks like much more fun than the clerk of courts.
So, here is Mrs. Zersky's 3rd grade class's picture. Their caption was "Fall Into Recycling." They're at McKinley Elementary School in Illyria. We had four winners. This is the second winner, Jordan Oberg. He's a 5th grader at Midview East Intermediate School. His teacher is Mrs. Wong. The caption is right there on the picture, "Reduce, Reuse, Reimagine." The next winner is Macy Kowalski, a 10th grader at Vermillion High School. Her teacher is Kristen Schneid, and the caption is "Recycling Helps Even in the Smallest Amount." And our final winner is Sarah Calhoun, an 11th grader at Midview High School. Her teacher is Heather Burns, and the caption is "Recycling Affects More Than the Planet." And fun fact, Sarah also was a winner in our calendar contest earlier this year, which we did not realize until after she was chosen as a winner for this contest. We, of course, want to thank everyone for their support, especially Rob Ernst from MT Business and GT Environmental, who helped with the gift cards for our winners, and thank you Commissioner Kokoski for helping me judge the contest. All right, that's it for me, Commissioners.
Thank you. It's always fun. I mean, there's a lot of talent out there, the coloring contest and the photo contest. It's really hard sometimes to pick because there's so many good ones, but we tried to narrow it down, and some, you know. We do the best we can.
Brandy, just wanted to thank you for all that you do. It really takes a unique talent and skill to connect with the students like you do, and we just have received so much positive feedback about your talents and what you're doing to connect with the kids, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
She's got a heart for children. We always get compliments from students and teachers, and, thank you.
She's just a big kid.
Yeah. Big kid herself. Okay, a little early for the 10 o'clock, but do we want to go to the Clerk of Courts?
Do our agenda first.
Do the agenda first?
Do the agenda first.
Under Resolutions Number 1, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Airport, approved change order number 1 to Smith Paving and Excavating Norwalk Rehab of Public Apron at the Airport. Change orders to adjust increased concrete quantities and extends the contract date to October 31st, 2015, and this project was delayed awaiting FAA approval of grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few personnel issues, some hiring, potential hiring at the Collection Center, Job and Family Services, ongoing negotiations, and possibly the sale and purchase of real estate. All three of those topics will open to sunshine after Executive Session discussion, so I'd ask that to conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into Executive Session, we talk about those three issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved, we have the reading in the minutes of November 10.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service agreement with Merge Inc., Avon Lake and the Mountain Act to exceed 8,600 to provide Internet services to the agency's website for calendar year 16, effective January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016, and authorized director to men for program content and increased value and execute on behalf of Court of Prosecutors per request form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Sanitary, enter into lease agreement with U.S. Bank Equipment Financing, amount of $74,148 for Ford F-750 truck with 10-foot dump body from Valley Ford under state term. Authorized Minister Jackson behalf of Court of Prosecutors per request form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under CBCF, authorized execution of the Fourth Amendment of the sublease agreement with respect to CBCF and Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction Project 16 CBCF 004. Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction through capital funds will release 4.8 million for the expansion of the 50 beds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Common Police Adult Probation, approved subsidy grant agreement addendum in the amount of $36,110 with Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the Community-Based Corrections Program, 408 non-residential misdemeanor. There is no cash match required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Commissioner, do you want to go to the hearings now?
Yeah, we could do that. 15 minutes. Yes.
That's fine, you're in charge.
No, I ain't, well, I don't want to be, you know.
Got a whole room full of important people here.
Right.
That probably have better things to do.
Okay, Tom, Orlando?
Good morning.
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 It is an honor to be here and to be able to present our budget for the Clerk of Court of Common Police for 2016.
Look at that, didn't even need any help, it's from the IT guy, see that?
He's a good go-to guy, too.
He is.
He did prep me beforehand, so. The monitor here is out, so I'm going to do my best to follow everything and keep everyone updated. We're going to talk a little bit about what we've done this year, what we're looking to do in the future, and say overall, since I've taken office in January, it's been a big learning curve. I did work directly with the Clerk of Courts in numerous positions throughout my career, dating back to the 1980s, when I was an investigator for Child Support Force from Agency, when it was still a part of the Domestic Relations Court, as a bailiff for both General Division and Domestic Relations Division. And I came in with some ideas. Obviously, when you're on the outside and you're utilizing services, you can see things that are being done very well, and maybe areas where you think there are areas for improvement. And I think that I'm solely putting my stamp on how I think the office should run, and generally, I've been receiving a lot of support, both from the employees of the Clerk's office, and it seems like there, right now, I can say that there is a real energy to strive to become the best Clerk of Courts office in the state of Ohio in every aspect, so I'm proud to be associated with the employees that I have in that office. Okay, I'm going to start out here with some highlights from 2015 in the office. We initiated a comprehensive inmate collections program, which I'll talk about a little bit more in my presentation. I've also had to administer staff reductions and consolidation of job duties that have resulted in savings to the general fund. We're shepherding the process of obtaining a new case management system, which will allow for e-filing, reduce wasteful use of paper, and create efficiencies throughout the justice system. We began offering for the first time watercraft registration services in the Lorraine Branch Title Office. We established performance standards for evaluating job performance in both divisions, legal and title, and the performance evaluations have begun in the Legal Division and will begin in 2016 for the Title Division. We are now offering extended office hours in three branch title offices, with one evening a week at each office to better serve our customers. We also negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement with the Title Division clerks. We overhauled our supply purchasing procedures to save money, and we partnered with Adult Probation and Probate Court to increase collections rates from defendants on probation and from defendants with court-ordered financial obligations who stand inherent money or property. In our Legal Division, which is our General Fund Division, a little bit about what we do there. We support the Domestic Relations and General Divisions of the Common Police Court, as well as the 9th District Court of Appeals. As the custodian of court records, we have case documents dating back to 1824. Before the Ohio Constitutional Amendments of 1851, the Supreme Court of Ohio was required to convene once yearly in each county. Consequently, we have records of Supreme Court cases dating back from 1826 to 1853. We also hold naturalization records of Lorraine County residents from the 1850s through the mid-1980s. Since I've taken office in January of 2015, I have reduced my Legal Division staff by two employees, and I have expanded the Court Revenue Department. The Clerk is statutorily required to collect funds paid by order of the Court and disburse them to other government entities, victims, service providers, and the like. Collections. As you can see, although our new case filings are down, the Legal Division is working hard in collecting more money per case than last year. This is due to a new emphasis on collecting court-ordered financial obligations using all available avenues. As you can see, in 2014 through September 30th of that year, there were 11,984 new case filings. This year, there have been 9,348 new case filings. Average collections per case last year was $298.85. This year, we've increased that to $353.81 per new case filing.
I have a question, Tom.
Sure.
Just as we're going through your presentation. The case files, those 2,640 that it's down, do you have any idea what that's a mix of? Foreclosures are down, we know that.
Civil and criminal filings both are down.
Everything's down?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But I'm going to go into some things that we're doing that aren't down, that aren't necessarily reflected there as well. But our emphasis on collecting revenue is making up a lot of that difference. As you can see, the total amount collected is nowhere near the percentage of the cases that are down.
You're able to go, like, for, I see you're doing inherited property, but what about, like, tax returns and things like that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes. Garnishments. This figure is projected through the end of 2015, and there are a lot of court-ordered garnishments that we have to follow up on. As you can see, our garnishment collections are up this year from last year. Inmate Collections Program. Procedures established by the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction in the Ohio Administrative Code permit a Clerk of Court to attach the commissary account of a state prison inmate to make payments upon the inmate's court-ordered financial obligation. My office just began submitting this paperwork in April of this year, and have already collected over $50,000 in payments on behalf of inmates. We have sent out 2,765 inmate collection program referrals that have been made so far this year. And we need to be more diligent on collecting from defendants, especially felony offenders in Lorraine County. As you can see to the figure on the right, our annual criminal case filings are down, and they're down substantially from 2014. But because of new programs like our inmate collection program, we hope to stem the loss on what revenue we're actually bringing in. When I initiated this program in April of this year, there's a lot that goes into each case inmate collection program. The Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections administer this program at each state prison in Ohio. They have one individual basically at each prison that administers this program. So, my goal was, when we started this program in April, there's a substantial packet that needs to be sent out to each prison for each case, and we are hoping that we can have these completed by the end of the year. We actually got all of our current cases out by the end of June, and I attribute that to the hard-working folks in our office that were able to get that done. And we're finding out that we sent out so many packages to the state prisons that this one employee at each prison can't keep up with all the packets we sent. So they're still going through cases that we sent back in April, May, and June, and we're continually sending new cases. Once convicted felons are sentenced by the Court, and they are then transported to what would be their home prison, we then follow up with that packet. If individuals are working in prison, and they are truly indigent and only have under $25 in their account, we don't attach any of their commissary. But we've seen cases that have come through the Court, and this spans over many years, where individuals claim they're indigent, and they have thousands of dollars in their commissary account, and they owed money to victims, the victims of crime here in Lorraine County, and the taxpayers. And we're very satisfied with the $50,000 we've collected, basically, in six months, and we hope that number will be even stronger next year. And again, just want to reiterate, that's money that goes right into the general fund.
That's money we've never seen before.
Yes.
It's great.
Civil Protections Orders. Petitions for Civil Protection Orders, CPOs as they're called, can be filed in the General Division in civil stalking or sexually-oriented offense matters involving non-family members or family or household members in the Domestic Relations Division as domestic violence cases. After, as you can see on the chart there on the right, after decreasing slightly in 2014, these filings have increased and are projected to reach 765 by the end of this year, which would be an all-time high. No funds are collected on these types of cases. So this is basically a mandate from the state that the Clerk's office has to process these cases, which takes time from our employees, and even though some other filings are down, filings like these are up, and there's no filing fee, and we can't collect any funds on these cases. So this takes time from our staff to be able to provide these, which we're more than willing to do, and as a bailiff in General Division Domestic Relations, I have seen many of these cases come through, and a lot of them are very serious, and these Protections Orders protect a lot of individuals in our county from perpetrating. So it's something that I obviously feel is needed, but just want to reiterate, it takes a lot of time, and there's no funds collected, and those cases are an all-time high this year. Notary Public Services. The Clerk brings in an extra money for the general fund by providing notary applications and processing payments on behalf of the Lorraine County Notary Commission. This is a non-mandated service. We're more than happy to provide this service, and as you can see, we are pretty much on track for what we brought in 2014, which would be over $4,800 that will go into our general fund. Our 2016 Legal Division Budget Request. I know all three Commissioners know, because I let all you know about this situation. In 2014, the Clerk received $200,000 in foreclosure funding from the General Division of the Common Police Court. This year, which is my first year in office, we received $150,000 from the Court. So we absorbed a $50,000 cut in our Legal Division budget from 2014 to 2015. We tried to find other ways to supplement the office with that $50,000. I know the Board and Mr. Cortez were also helpful, but we received a legal opinion on some other funds, and it wasn't feasible, but we do appreciate the effort. We were able to absorb that $50,000 cut, and as I mentioned, increase our collections department and our rate of collections per case. I was informed, actually twice, by the General Division Court that in 2016, we will receive no funding, which would be an additional $150,000 cut from '15, which is a total of $200,000 cut from 2014. After our office was able to put together our projections and what our general request would be for our 2016 budget, I followed up with another communication with the Court to see if they would give us a portion of what we received this year, and received a written notification that the answer was still no, and we were going to be cut down to zero.
So this was taking place all these years, and now, all of a sudden, it stopped?
I believe it started in 2008 or 2009, and yes, it has now went to zero.
Well, they're still collecting fees, I'm sure. Do we know how many, how much fees they're collecting that they used to pay you out of the fund?
I don't have that exact number. Foreclosures are down, but I can tell you, we're still processing a lot of foreclosures in the Clerk of Courts.
And you've requested that they reconsider this idea?
I did, and I even asked for a much lower amount, an amount that would, well, basically $48,000 is what I requested, which would be a 66% cut from what we received this year and a 75% cut from what we received in 2014, and that was denied. All right, despite the loss of $150,000, which represents a 13.5% cut of my total Legal Division budget for this year, my 2016 General Division general fund request is only $48,944 higher than I was appropriated for 2014. In less than a year's time, I've reduced my staffing, increased efficiencies, promoted cross-training, shifted allowable costs to other funds, and cut office supply expenditures to save the general fund over $100,000. So our 2016 Legal Division Budget Request will be $1,159,385. Our estimated 2016 revenue will be $840,000. Special Revenue Funds. Our Certificate of Title Division. We have four offices located throughout the county. They are in Amherst, Illyria, Lorraine, and North Ridgeville. We issue certificates of title to motor vehicles and watercraft. We process passport book and card applications, and we take passport photographs. We offer watercraft registrations in the Lorraine Branch Office. We provide temporary tag services with title transactions in the North Ridgeville and Amherst Branch Offices. Transaction Statistics for Title. We estimate that the number of our total 2015 title transactions will exceed 2014's numbers. You can see here our projections. You can see here our projections through what we've done this year, 2014, we're two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-nine transactions. We are projecting two hundred and seventy-five thousand and forty-two this year. Extended office hours. On July thirteenth, my title offices began offering extended business hours to better serve our busy and hardworking customers. We were able to achieve that in our collective bargaining agreement with our union employees in the four title offices. So now Lorain office is open until six PM on Mondays. Our Amherst office is open until six PM on Tuesdays and our North Ridgeville office is open until six PM on Wednesdays. We've gotten great feedback from the community at large appreciating the fact that we are now open till six as we're working Lorain County and people that want to get their titles transferred or come out and get passports, passports for the family can do so in these locations up until six PM Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And I thank our employees also in the title offices for being a part of this new and expanded service that we offer. New non-mandated services. In May of this year, we began offering watercraft registration services in Lorain branch title office. Ohio law requires all recreational boats to be registered, which includes canoes, sailboats and jet skis. Bless you. Customers can now enjoy the convenience of titling and registering their watercraft in one location. This is the first time in Lorain County that we were able to offer watercraft registration. So now we basically have a one-stop shop for watercraft at our Lorain title office. If someone goes out and buys a new boat, they can come out, they can get their title transferred and register their boat right at the Lorain office.
Yeah, it's a lakefront county that's pretty important, I would think, for us to have. And I know that you have to cut through the red tape in Columbus and everything else. So that was a, a great accomplishment to get through and finally get this done.
And, and thank you, Mr. Lundey. Yes, it was. And I actually saw Ron Nabokowski a little while after we got it and he came over and congratulated me and said it's something they were looking at for years and he was real happy to see that we were able to make it through the state process and we've got that watercraft seal up on a Lorain office window now. So it's been a nice service to, to provide the boaters of Lorain County. So, and it helps when the title office is a few blocks from the lake too.
Yes.
A lot of traffic coming through that, our boaters. Other title division services. We also offer limited authority deputy registrar, also known as LADR. Transactions are offered in two of our branch offices as a convenience for our customers needing temporary tags with their titles. As you can see here, the numbers are very consistent with the previous years. We also offer passport and photo sales that have been very strong this year and we anticipate continued growth for the service into 2016. And we're exceeding our number from last year on passport services. Our 2016 title division budget request will be one million five hundred and seventy thousand and six hundred and seventy dollars. And I can tell you that with, with our collective bargaining agreement, there were raises that were included. And as you all know, the cost of healthcare has went up. So even with those costs being factored in our budget, my budget request for 2016 in title is lower than the budget request for 2015. Estimated 2016 revenue from our certificate of title will be one point seven million for next year. And I'm also pleased to be able to donate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in certificate of title monies for the benefit of the general fund. And just to go back a little bit, in my request for our legal division, we have cut significant amount of monies, one hundred thousand dollars this year. If you look at the total from what we were receiving from the foreclosure funds, which was two hundred thousand dollars in 2014, it's going to zero. I'm asking for an additional forty-eight thousand, which still cuts my budget about a hundred and fifty thousand, but I am asking for a little bit more from the general fund. But as you can see, I'm willing to dig into our reserves in certificate of title. Last year, we were able to donate three hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. This year, I want to donate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the overall budget for the clerk of court, when you look at the legal division and our certificate of title division, will be revenue neutral compared to 2015.
We had spoke about this some night, shared it with my other commissioners when you and I had met, that you had the three hundred thousand and you had the forty-nine thousand dollar shortfall. If you could bring the other fifty thousand, you said that will make you sort of tight for next year in regards to your title or is that still going to be?
I think when you look at the projections barring any significant change to the economy, I think we'll be fine.
Like I said, commissioners, it was done before in the past, Ron Nabokowski, with the shortfalls we've had in our general fund budget where he's been able to help out with some additional title dollars because those were up in regards to getting some more general fund money. So it ends up being, you know, in and out basically to, I mean, actually he's taken a two hundred thousand dollar cut after two years and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into sixteen. I see it as a reasonable request.
I do and I appreciate you trying to make it work. I'm just concerned as to the, the, the courts receiving those fees from the foreclosures and now all of a sudden not giving you any of it, kind of concerns me. So I think we need another request.
Yeah, it's like hitting an iceberg. You somehow manage to right the ship and keep moving, but that's, that's a pretty strong hit.
Did you have a comment about the?
I don't want to interrupt his presentation.
Foreclosures?
I was going to wait until you were done, but I did have, but next, next week, we are scheduled for a budget hearing, so you'll have a complete budget hearing and you can ask some additional questions. But I did bring the foreclosure revenue history chart from that presentation so that you can see that it's not that, you know, we're trying to be stingy, you know, even this year with a hundred and fifty thousand, it's still not covering the costs of the department that we have that does foreclosures as well. So over the past eight years, it's been a hundred and fifty, or one million five hundred thousand that's been distributed to the clerk of court's office. It's, it's, it's not that we're upset with them or we're trying to.
The revenues just have gone down that much?
Significantly, yes.
What, what is last year's revenue?
Last year's was two hundred and eighty-five thousand and this year's, it's currently at two hundred and around fifteen thousand and we don't expect it to hit two thousand and fourteen levels.
From my projections, it's pretty much going to mirror 2014. I have a chart here that shows 2014 and 2015 are almost identical. And I'd like to follow up since you wanted to interject and I appreciate that. What are your plans for your foreclosure department next year? Are you keeping it intact?
Yes.
Yeah, that was going to be my question too. I mean, revenue continues to fall, caseload continues to fall. We continue to not provide assistance, but yet we continue to employ the same amount of people. I don't know, I don't know if that equation has real balance in it.
Well, again, there are some other factors that need to be considered and I wasn't going to get into this today because of presentations next week, but the foreclosure department, when it was started with the same level, was working for two judges and they're now doing the caseload of six judges. So it's not that they are doing less work, even though there are fewer cases. It's the, the distribution of the cases and as you say, there are the, civil protection orders are up. They don't go directly to the clerk's office, they pass through all the courts.
But civil protection orders aren't foreclosure.
No, I'm just, I'm just discussing the work, the workload.
You involved yourself in the conversation, so I know you weren't prepared to talk about it, but the, the, the numbers don't make sense. And I think that's what Mr. Orlando is speaking to and I'm sure we'll have a conversation with Mr. Ruby next week, but the numbers keep falling, but the employees and the staff remain the same, but the assistance to other people decreases because the caseload's decreasing. The funding is directly attributed to the number of cases coming through, correct?
That is true.
I'd like to follow up with a question too. You brought up the civil stalking protection orders. Who handles those cases? Do the magistrate for the individual judges handle those cases?
Correct.
Or does the foreclosure department handle those?
The magistrates at the, in the judge's office currently, however, as these caseloads continue to drop, those, you know, the work level will be adjusted as time goes on.
Currently, the magistrate for the individual.
So I can't, I, I mean, it's not my decision.
I just, I just want to clarify.
Okay.
Currently, and it has always been practiced in that court, because I was a bailiff in that court, the magistrate that worked for that individual judge or the judge will handle those civil stalking protections orders, not the magistrate, magistrates in the foreclosure department. Is that correct?
That's the current practice.
That's always been the practice, correct?
I can't speak, I can't speak to the future.
Okay. But there's, so the magistrates that handle foreclosures are not handling the CSPOs.
No, I, I.
Thank you.
I didn't get up here to start an argument.
No, no one's arguing, we're just asking you information since you brought some up.
Okay.
I wanted to be informed a little further. Thank you.
Information is good. You know the right questions to ask since you've been there and done that, so.
I have.
Thank you.
And I thought Mr. Cordes brought the word balance and that was my approach in my second request for a portion of the funds, just to bring some balance in the equation rather than being cut to zero. And I was denied.
Well, we appreciate you bringing the other fifty thousand dollars to cover the shortfall in your short, you know, you watched your general fund budget, so.
Thank you.
How was your first year, full first year?
It's going great. I, I enjoy it. We have a, a very energetic staff and I think that now that we've created job standards for all the positions in both legal and title and we're going to do performance reviews that we haven't done in years, I think we can identify our strengths and weaknesses and hopefully keep getting better for the future.
Good. Heard all good things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I saw the prosecutor's office is here.
The entire office.
The entire office is here.
Well, we heard you are the entire office.
All in one person.
Your legend there.
A whole office.
Because we have nothing to do, we're down with none.
In Columbus, they call that doing more with less, so. It is a myth. I would agree with you one hundred percent.
If you're doing your job in the first place, the only thing you do with less is less.
The biggest problem is the civil division. They have absolutely nothing to do.
Wow, Jerry.
We'll leave that to you.
Dennis may get here, but he's, I know, a couple of you know, his brother passed away, so they're.
I did know that.
Yeah. His brother passed away. His oldest, older brother. And so his arrangements being made, so he's going to try to get here.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. I would go through a spiel, but I don't want to bore you to tears. That's why I send this over. I will say a couple of things. Number one, we don't have less cases. Number two, we don't have less work. In fact, it, it kind of grows exponentially, but more important, what we're finding in, in the prosecutor's office is we're going through a lot of issues and transitions potentially based on certain, I would say to you, expected changes in the law that are going to potentially change a lot of things. You know, you read in the paper about, you know, cases and how they're being dealt with differently, new discovery rules and all those kinds of things. Well, there's a task force that is together in Columbus that is working through some issues that may lead to substantial changes. We don't know what those are going to be, but we anticipate with those will come additional procedures that we are going to have to undertake in, in handling our cases. We have a new treatment court that has just started in the general division, Judge Meraldi, and we've had to dedicate a staff member to that. So as these, as these things evolve, they create obviously more and different work. So I will give you that much input. My requests, and I'm going to kind of go through them a little bit here generally. The general fund request, take us back ten years ago. The salary request is exactly what the commissioners gave us in the general fund in 2006. That's what that request is. The 4D issue, and I was talking yesterday with staff members, with Lisa, et cetera, that is our child support enforcement division. We had made an initial request for, I think it was nine hundred and some thousand dollars.
About nine eighty.
Yeah, I'm going to explain that to you. We were, were able to get it down to eight seventy-six-ish and here's why that happened. Number one, in my original request, I had one more position for about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars. And the purpose of that was we have a turnover in our prosecutor's staff on a semi-regular basis. And it's, it's not due to the fact, at least they don't tell me, because they dislike my smiling face and otherwise, like Jerry would smile there. But, and I've said this before, because they're going to get paid more someplace else. And so what we've tried to do is create a, a situation where we at least have someone who is being trained, so when that happens, they can move into a position. Sometimes illness. We have another prosecutor in our office who is pregnant. We have one that has just came off of ten weeks of pregnancy leave. We have another one that's going to be going on pregnancy leave. So on the, on the one hand, you don't want to overstaff. On the other hand, courts don't suspend dockets because your attorneys, you know, are not able to appear. So that was one of the reasons. If we can get something close to our general fund request, I wouldn't need it because I'll use the general fund for that. A person, but we need a person like that. It's kind of in training. Two. The other difference was in, substantial difference frankly, was in the health insurance area. We have had a turnover of like four people in the last twelve months in this division. Well, you don't know if a person leaving is on a single payer, you know, a single plan versus a family plan. So I have always requested a substantial amount more than what we ever spent. But I'll cut it back. If you look at this year, we're probably going to end up in the health insurance area maybe a hundred and eighty, give or take. And maybe one ninety. You know, I requested two sixty, just in case everybody, anybody who might end up getting hired, if people leave, end up on the family plan. That's was the reason for that.
That's a lot of money, the difference, especially when we just came out with a five percent increase, George.
Right.
We're trying to get as close as we can. We do have a shortfall for next year.
Right. So, well, I guess what I'm saying to you is I understand that, but I can't adjust this during the course of the year. It's not adjustable. It's not adjustable like I might be able to take money and transfer, you know, in the general fund from an account to an account. It's not going to work here because I, I have a very little amount in non-personnel. So that's always been the reason for that. We've never spent.
You're still talking about 4D, right?
Yep.
Okay.
We've never spent it. That's the point. But if you want to get closer to it, that's fine. And this will get you right down to about that number. So those are the two big areas.
Well, and concerns, when you and I had our discussion on Monday. There's always that flop out in the first quarter that goes between you and DR on adjustment of budget. So I mean, that's, that number for purposes of doing a 2016 budget for 1-1-16, as we've always said, it's a living document by three thirty of sixteen, those numbers get moved around anyway in regards to what your expenditures are going to be.
And I appreciate that, except this is a contract with jobs and family services in the state of Ohio. And I'm not complaining, I'm just saying it's a pain in the rear end.
Yes, it is.
It's not like an appropriation with the general fund, which is very easy to deal with because I can adjust back and forth between some accounts if, you know, things happen. You know, I can defer on maybe buying the server that we need for our, you know, you can always do those things. And in this one, just because of the contract, it's with the state, it has to be approved, it's a pain to try to juggle through it, but I'll, I'll make, I'll make do. I understand what you're saying.
DR is doing the same thing with their contracts.
Right.
So, yeah, we understand that, just.
So that, that's the 4D end, unless somebody has any questions. So it's down to about eight seventy-six, I think, is the final number? Okay. In the 4E. 4E has always been pretty doggone close to a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement in salary and PERS. I know they had some issues this year at some point in getting the reimbursement from the state of Ohio. I'm not exactly sure what it was, but in talking with them, there were some issues with new people, but the numbers are not going to change. But I would say to you, it wouldn't surprise me if you get a double. get a double payment the first quarter of next year and maybe not get a full payment this, I don't know. I don't know how that's gonna work itself out in November, December.
Well, that's in and out money.
Right, exactly. And then the general fund is the general fund. I can talk about that account by account if you wish me to. But I've tried to give you the, kind of the ballpark by taking a number of years and averaging it out in one of my exhibits, what we would spend in each one of those, each one of those categories. Now, Mr. Lundey did call me and asked me, you know, why is your equipment request so much higher? Well, you'll note, if anybody noticed that beside Matt, it's because there was a change downstairs in the auditor's office and what we used to for computer equipment and for furniture and fert, things. Well, they've eliminated that now, and it all goes into equipment. So you'll see a zero request in those two categories. The number really hasn't changed. I'll answer any questions anybody has.
We're just trying to figure out how to get to the numbers based on the revenues of budget commission. I don't know if you attended or Dennis attended on what they're saying for our revenues.
Well, Mr. Orlando is donating, I heard the word donation, I think, four times today, five times, something to that effect.
It's, it's a new term.
Yeah, instead of returning money, it's just donation.
As opposed to not spending.
Yes.
That's what I heard. We will accept.
Any donations?
Be part of that donation. And-
Got a couple hundred grand more in-
Because I'm, because, without any ques, because we're not proud. We'll accept that, okay? So, nobody has any, pardon me?
You're basic, you're asking for 175 more in salary, so you're looking to hire one to two people?
Frankly, we already have.
Okay.
And if I have to dance around it somehow, then I'd have to probably dance around it. What I'm saying is you've already hired that person that would have gone into the 4D category, who is in the process of training now and will work, you know, through issues, will handle pregnancy leave, helped handle the pregnancy leave in the children's services that we just finished, and the next pregnancy leave, which is in the child support enforcement division.
Well, you're putting on a floater.
It's exactly what he is.
I mean, and there's, there's time-
It's exactly what he is.
And there, there is times operationally when that's necessary.
So that's what this person will begin to do. And in addition, when I say a couple, we just hired one to take the place of a person who just left. But that's it. Now, if you take 3% of 2.5, if you use last year's number, that's 2,575. Okay? And this year was like 266. We add in that extra person that I'm talking about right now, then you're gonna get up pretty darn close to the number in our request. And we'll, like I said, Tom's donation will handle it, and then we'll all be good.
Well, I appreciate all that you and your staff do. As you said, the caseloads don't go away, and you still have to, to do your services and responsibilities. Personally, we like the civil division. It's, uh-
Yeah, we, uh-
Very well done.
We think you should, you know, put some more emphasis on that.
But, uh-
I, I would, I'd like to. Civil division, all kidding aside, is kind of the best-kept secret, except for everyone who needs the service. Then they understand how important that is.
They need the secret from us. I've been working with Jerry for 22 years, so the, hopefully we can continue to get some of those unique relationships like we have with the land bank and things like that to bring funds over there.
And for those of you who don't know, Jerry and I went to law school together.
Wow.
And you could tell much of my, much of my personality has rubbed off on him.
Oh, my.
Oh, you're like twins, I swear.
Yeah.
But I do- I'm sorry?
No, I was just gonna say, you know, when I would have my monthly town hall meetings, you know, I'd often hear people say about all these cushy government jobs and everything else, but your department probably is, has seen the impact of, you know, when somebody makes the decision to go into public sector compared to the private sector, we all know that there is a, a big difference there that takes place. That's just the reality of it. But for the general public to know that, you know, you have lost six experienced attorneys over the, the past six years primarily because of the, the compensation question, they may be surprised to find out that after somebody's made a, a very strong commitment to the legal profession, probably comes out of school with close to $100,000 worth of debt, that they're making $45,000 a year to, to start, you know, with your department. And I think you have about the five of your 35 attorneys, according to your document here, that are paid less than $50,000 a year. So-
Correct.
It's just important for the public to understand how, how government works, because I think sometimes the perception is that people are, you know, feeding at the public trough and everybody's getting rich on, on the taxpayers' dollars, when in effect, you have people with a lot of education who work very long hours and, and deal with a lot of cases, and, you know, they're making $45,000 or $50,000 a year.
Well, you know, we tell our people when they come in, if this is, if you expect to like make a lot of money, you're really in the wrong area, number one. Number two, if you're the an eight-to-four kind of person, nine-to-five, that kind of person, this is not for you. If you're a Monday-through-Friday person, this is not for you. When you get the call at 2:00 in the morning, because somebody needs a search warrant, when you get a call at 1:30 in the morning that we have just discovered a baby dead location, it just was a shooting on the weekend, well, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do. That's not a complaint. It's the nature of the job.
And another issue being, you're not like other departments that have a lot of special funds to work out of and move people.
We really, no, we don't.
You're a general fund expenditure.
Primarily. Obviously, we have some child support, a little bit of children's services money, but we are a general fund, you know, expenditure department. And, you know, you're, you try to stay organized, but, you know, obviously we're very responsive. It's just the nature of the beast. And if you need to meet with the victim's family and all they can do is meet on a Sunday, that's when they can get everybody together, then you meet on a Sunday. And that's the nature of the job. That's, I mean, this is what it is. We accept that. And, but, you know, we'd like to think that, that certainly the commissioners appreciate the fact that that's what we do. I mean, look, look at Jerry. Between township meetings in the evenings and other meetings in the evenings and that staff people, and I'm gonna tell you, I, I don't want to blow too much smoke at him, but this is on TV they need to know. I mean, this guy is a seven-day-a-week, he's in the office every day. He could be at a township meeting till 10, 11 o'clock the previous night, and he's at the office 8:00 in the morning. And I know that, because he's either coming up to me to, to tell me how bad the Browns are, or he's coming up, over to me to tell me how bad the Indians are, or vice versa. That, that's the kind of, that's the kind of person that, you know, I can tell you right now, I take a lot of pride in. The public has no idea the money's worth they're getting out of him. None.
I also wanted to compliment the prosecutor and yourself and the office for the supporting documentation. I think I said this to you the other day, even sitting in finance committee in Columbus, where we're talking about individuals making much larger requests than you're requesting. I've never seen this kind of support documentation. It's just very well-done, very thorough, and, and I think this would even give the general public a better understanding of how the department runs and, and how you're running things efficiently. And just want to thank you for putting all that together, and do extend our sympathies to the, to the prosecutor and his family.
Did you do it? Because normally when we get things from you, it's all handwritten out on a yellow tablet paper, so.
That's when you don't give me any time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, here Karen can type it up.
That's when you, that's, and one last thing, I want to say something to, to everyone. The, the two people who came over and did the painting on the third floor of the Justice Center, they did a magnificent job.
Good, good to know.
I just want to let everybody, I want, I'll let you know that. I mean, they did, and I told Karen Davis that. Did a great job.
We're gonna be doing more housekeeping over there. The building's 10 years now.
Right.
So we're trying to get some, yeah, a little more than that, you're right. Trying to get some carpeting in there.
I appreciate that.
We're gonna get a decent carpenter this time.
But I'm telling you, they're, they're-
Oh, excuse me.
Who'd he work for again, Lauren?
Their attention to detail, and as hard as they work, you know, I get there about 6:00, 10 after 6:00 in the morning. They were there, they're working. I, I mean, and they did a really, 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 really nice job.
We, we don't have a lot of money, so we have to maintain what we got in a good repair.
They did a great job.
Good to know. Thank you.
I certainly hope that you got a basket full of loaves of bread.
Yeah, I don't know. How many sock drawers do you have left? Do you have many?
I don't have a sock, never mind a drawer.
We're back, Mr. Cordes.
Thank you. You know, I will point out, I said it before, I'll say it again, and I know all these folks need what they're asking for, but this is gonna be one of the most challenging budget years that we've seen, since we initially entered the period of downturn and made all those substantial cuts. So we got a lot of, a lot of tough things to do in, in December with regard to the budget. You know, I just, I just have one thing to say about the terrorist attacks in Paris. What happens there can happen here, and what happens here happens there. And I think we all should remember that and, and, you know, previously concerned for how those things affect us here at home. The cost of freedom is high. It always has been, but it, it appears that, that, that the price tag keeps getting bigger and bigger. So, you know, we just had Veterans Day, and we have our forces out there. Just saw that they deployed one of the carrier task groups over to the area again. The Navy's out on point, with a lot of other folks. So we just gotta remember that freedom is, freedom is hard fought, and sometimes you gotta spill the blood of innocence to take the blood of tyrants. So I'll have to add this one. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ennis?
Uh, I just have one matter of pending litigation to discuss with the commissioners in executive session.
Commissioners report. This past Saturday, I made a trip down to Columbus. One of my best childhood friends, her name's Colleen Scott, it was galvin growing up. Had her first book published. Yeah, and she had a book signing, so I went down there, and I just want to congratulate Colleen. It's a first of a series of four, I think, and it's called Misconceptions, and I read the whole book on Sunday, so it was really good. So, go out and got, go out and buy it. Tuesday, Commissioner Lundey and myself went and toured, or viewed Gore Orphanage Ditch. I guess since it didn't change much, you decided not to come out and see it.
I, I looked at my calendar at 11:00. I called Matt at 11:00, "Where the hell's everybody at?" And it was 10:00, and it was proper on my calendar. I just moved it on my thing. Showed up at 11:00. Same ditch was there, same ditch was there.
Same exact ditch.
Now, wait a minute. I lost an hour and a half of my life listening to an ACA webinar that you were supposed to listen to, to do that, and you didn't go, huh, Commissioner? Okay.
I've seen it before. Same ditch, same problem, different funding mechanism.
Yeah, same problem. Yeah, so there, it will be paid for by, by our SWAC? Should it go through? We have that hearing?
No, it'll be paid for by our Stormwater District. The SWAC is the advisory committee.
Correct. The money from the SWAC. Yeah, I got my terminology wrong, sorry about that. But, so, it was nice to see everybody out there. They were kinda surprised that I was there again, since I had gone the last time, but I'm glad I took a trip out there. On the way, over on 18, they have lawn horn steers. I felt like I was in Texas. I've never seen them before. I used to go that way to go golfing down in Nova over the years, and I'd never seen those steers down there, so it was pretty cool. It's like, Lorain County is so diverse, you really need to get around and, and take a look. So, that's basically the end of my report.
Wonderful. Commissioner Lundey and I attended the Valor Home grand opening, official grand opening. It's been almost a year. They've done a wonderful job with their programs, and, and we'll be out there again tomorrow. But just a great job. They honored, people really helped out, Sam Felton, Dan Gelati, Don Addy, just a whole group of people helped put that together, and not to skip anybody's names. It just was a complete community effort to get Valor Home there after three years.
Committed, talk about committed people.
NOAACA, our Governance Committee and Executive Board met for final agenda items for the December board meeting, end-of-year projects and such, funding getting us onto our transportation program. And then the United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Board Committee I serve on, it helps allocate the dollars to the Salvation Army's Catholic charities and such. When those federal dollars come out, we're still waiting. We had our initial meeting again this year, waiting for them to move forward. We'll be advertising for those people who allocate those dollars for the United Way. Look, thank Peggy Chair Berlin, who's done a great job chairing the committee, and has decided to keep chairing the committee. So, end of my report.
Yeah, it was a busy week, first starting with Veterans Day. Last week, had the opportunity to be part of the Veterans Day celebration at VFW Post 1079. What you may not know is that here in Elyria, we actually have the largest VFW post in the state. The largest American Legion post, I believe, is in defiance. But, so, that's a veterans trivia question, I guess, where's the largest VFW post in the state of Ohio, and it's actually right here in Elyria. Also want to thank the city of Elyria for asking me to participate in a focus group for their master plan for their parks, and had the opportunity to join a lot of community members for that, and that was a, a great two-hour discussion. Had a chance to visit recently with Mayor Brian Jensen and Avon, just get an update on all the growth that's taking place in, in Avon, and the mayor's doing a great job over there managing the growth. The Valor Home, as Ted pointed out, boy, you talk about overcoming a lot of hurdles and obstacles, and they just kept moving forward. And I always said, if you want to get it done, have a veteran in charge to take care of it. They definitely get the job done. And if you haven't had the opportunity, do stop over there and see the Valor Home. It's going to make a lot of, it's going to make a difference in the lives of a lot of veterans. Also, the North Ridgeville firefighters had a pancake breakfast on Sunday, and that was very well-attended. Certainly enjoyed that. Also had the opportunity to attend the OSU Extension Office Community Recycling Event that took place on Sunday. They're, they were working on a lot of interesting projects. I declined on having my face painted, but, but it was still a great event. A lot of educational opportunities for the, for the youth of the county to be there. And also would like to send out our prayers of support and sympathy to Elyria Councilman Tom Callahan. He lost his mother recently, and she died at the age of 90 years old.
Nice lady.
Okay, Tuesday, the 24th, we'll have budget hearings starting at 9:30. So, water, 9:45 sheriff, 10 o'clock common police, 10:15 board of elections, 10:30 coroner. And then Wednesday, November 25th, we'll have our regular scheduled board meeting. For correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.